...years watched my community dwaning away, or what I would say is becoming something that I am not as proud of. I think we have a wonderful location. We have an unbelievable sense of community in our area, and that is what holds so many of us here now. But I am just, first of all, I'm going to go back to the roads because we spent all night talking about animals, and yet our roads are in deplorable condition. And I know he said that we don't have the money to do it, but you're talking about all the money we have on other things. They have patched our roads, and they patch them, and before we know it, the potholes are back. And just driving from my house off Henderson Road over here, which is a very short distance, tonight, I cannot tell you the bumps. They did patch my street last week finally, but I can't tell you the bumps even with the patching, how uneven it is. And these roads are not going to last for whatever time he's talking about. We are going to have to have some resurfacing on them. I happen to have rushed over here from Dunwoody area where I was keeping my grandchildren tonight, and I noticed driving along there, I did not hit any of the roads like I'm having in Tucker. I don't know whether it's that we are not getting the monies that come for our area or what the purpose, I mean, why the reason is that our roads seem to be so bad every direction that I go. That is one concern. A second concern I have is the type of places that I see opening around me. I just, I'm shocked that I can go over here and go down Lawrenceville Highway, and it's just one night spot after another. Places that have dark windows that don't open till 9 o'clock at night. And I mean, I wonder when something doesn't open till 9 o'clock at night, why they're that late? And I've seen signs advertising things on there that don't sound like what I want in my community. I can go over another direction towards Shamley-Tucker Road, and I've been told over there where I go get alterations that this place next door that has dark windows, it's called a café, but I understand that that's not what goes on in there. I'm just concerned that these kind of places are coming around, are rising up in my community. It just seems like we don't get new restaurants, but we get all kinds. Every time we get something, it's something like that. I'm concerned about my mall, Northlake Mall, that was a wonderful mall when I moved here. It was built the year I moved into this community, and just the condition of it and what we have there. And I just hate to see a community that has been so wonderful just being destroyed and not, you know, and we're not getting new things to make us be a better place to live.
Yeah. If I can just jump in, and I'm gonna look for a couple people. One, I don't know with Ted, and I'm gonna ask Andrew, Ted's right here, and I'm gonna ask Andrew Baker because Andrew's with our Department of Planning and Sustainability. And they may be able to talk about some of the zoning and land use regulations, and Ted can talk about the roadways and some of the disparities you see in some jurisdictions versus others. But, you know, I'm gonna go to the mall example. We don't own the mall. When I say "we," I mean DeKalb County government doesn't own the mall. The mall is privately owned property. A large, to a large extent, what you've described, though, whether it's public property, the streets, or whether it's private property, the mall, is a function of a downturn in the economy. And we also have our chief appraiser here who knows a lot about the value of real estate. I think we've seen about a $5 billion overall decline in real estate over the last three years. 21% of the value of real estate prior to 2012. I'm still, we won't have the 2012 numbers until June, but I'm hoping and praying that, you know, we'll start to see an uptick on that. We're getting some good news on that at least. But if the revenue source is not there, quite honestly, I just don't have the ability to go out and repave every road. And you've heard Ted Reinhardt talk about how far we already are behind. And one of the reasons, one of the many reasons I'm advocating so strongly for the transportation referendum is because it will give us a revenue source while we wait for the value of real estate to come back. And it's not just a county problem. I mean, you could go anywhere in the metro area, and you'll see some of the same issues arising. And so it's a real issue.
Well, may I ask a question here while you're saying that? I don't know whether it's a matter of priorities, but I know our traffic lights were functioning fine as far as I was concerned. I drive in this neighborhood every day. I'm all over the place. And I don't know how much money has been spent, but these traffic lights, and I don't know what these other things are up there, whether they're cameras, what they are, but a huge amount of money has been put into all kinds of intersections around here, putting some new system in where we had traffic lights that didn't, that were working fine, and yet we're not getting our roads fixed. Why do we, why are we doing that? Our lights were working.
Yeah, about five or six years ago, the former governor, as one of the state's initiatives, put some of the bond money they sold into a program he called the Fast Forward Program. And one of the components of that was that among all the metro jurisdictions, they funded some traffic signal hardware and fiber optic interconnections in order to make the signals a little smarter, so to speak, and that, and that they could be better programmed to have an impact on traffic congestion. So the state earmarked some specific money from that. That's why you now see over the last five or six years in DeKalb, we've had something like 100 traffic signals out of our 600 replaced with money from the state. So that was a specific governor's initiative and should help a little with congestion. And you do see the cameras. They're using video detection for turning movements instead of the loop detectors. Loops get easily cut, and so this should help make the signal system a little more sophisticated, and it'll help a little with congestion. But the state specifically earmarked it for that, even if we had wanted to, which will have just as many people advocate for interconnected signals. We couldn't have used it for resurfacing. That's its own limited pot of state aid that the legislature appropriates every year just for that purpose. But the amount of money's been fairly flat for years, which is why our backlog is growing. And so the referendum can help. You saw the issue with Dunwoody. When the state created the legislation that allowed incorporation, what they, they wrote it in a way that gives favorable distribution of the host option sales tax to new cities. Specifically wrote it that way. So in previous years, out of the 80 million or so we collect in sales tax, about 20 million was available for infrastructure work, of which a portion we used toward resurfacing. This last year, we only had about 8 million of that available for infrastructure work. Dunwoody got about 2.6 million directly. So the formula the state rose was favorable, wrote was favorable to new cities. And so with some of that money, and I think they might have sold a bond issue as well, they caught up on their backlog at a faster pace than what we could do, even if we had a new 10, 12 million a year of new revenue. So it looks, on the face of it, why are they doing it that way? A lot of it's how the legislation was written.
Well, what can we do? Who do we go to so that our community can get the money to get our roads fixed?
Well, we're at the end of a legislative session, but every year, I mean, one of the things I called for at the beginning of this year was that we, Ted, he spoke of the issue relating to cities. And it's not that we're, we want to pit cities against counties, but that's exactly what the legislation that's been put in place by the legislature does. It pits cities against counties by taking revenue, every time a new city is created, revenue is taken out of the county, and not in a fair way. And it's, and one of the ways it's taking it out is it allows the cities to go, to draw the boundaries in a very arbitrary way, and they draw commercial property into the cities. So it really is creating a drag on county government. At the end of the day, everybody's got to pay for county services. But if you live in the cities, the sharing of those costs aren't being done in a fair way. And it's the legislation that creates cities, unique law in Georgia that allows that to happen. We gotta let our elected officials know what's going on, on not just the county level, but also the state level. Now, I've got, I'm trying to be fair, but I, you're asking a lot of questions, and I want to move over.
I know, I really have, and I let her ask, but I would like to have the issue addressed about the places that have come up.
Okay. All right. Andrew Baker's gonna come over here and talk to you. He, yeah, he's, okay, who's ever next? Who's next? Back here. Yes?
Hi, yes, sir. I'd like to offer a suggestion, too, if I may. First, we live in Stone Mountain, and it's pretty dangerous out there. I live with my mom to help her and my handicapped brother, who I had to ask to stop interrupting. Anyways, it's getting to the point where mom's getting afraid to leave her house, and I was wondering if it's possible for the county to buy some of these foreclosure homes, which go up for about $20,000, and put a bunkhouse in there, if you can, for policemen, young ones who are just coming on the force, who maybe need a place to stay. If there's a presence of officers in our community, it might stop the culture of crime that is in Stone Mountain, or at least push it aside. The second thing I'd like to offer is, is it possible to create another type of lottery that would help the animals that need help? We take in ferals from our feral colony who have been raised in our, actually, our backyard. And we have adopted out over 30 cats in the last few years, mainly through private individuals. And so I had offered this suggestion once before over in, at the Decatur Library last year. And it seems like if people want to put money into our schools through a lottery, and they only want to pay us like a 1% to the winner, and then the rest goes to the schools, what if it paid out about the same or a little bit more to the individual, and then the rest of the money could not only just go to the animal projects put to resurfacing our roads and other things that, instead of putting in a penny tax or paying a penny more, since it's just now 7%, it was much lower when I, when I was born in DeKalb County. I think it was like 2% or 3% 40 years ago. So instead of increasing your taxes, give somebody back what they really want, a big load of money. Is that, what, $200 million right now? And think of the payout for you guys.
Let me just say, so we can get, we got some questions, and I want to, I won't be able to get everybody. I'll stay for about 30 minutes after, but we may be able to get another five questions in. Let me just quickly say that obviously the vote that we're gonna have on transportation next year was not imposed by the county. It was based on law passed by the state and a regional effort, which DeKalb County participated in. But it was based on what the General Assembly, the state legislature gave us, and that's why we're moving forward in that direction. As far as the animal services report, I just want to encourage you all because I know it's, there's a, it's a segment of people here who have a lot of questions about that. In order to be as transparent as possible, we have posted that report online at the county's website, www.dekalbcountyga.gov. So you can go and read. I've given you a highlight of actions that we intend to take based upon the briefing that I received both from staff and the task force. But if you want to get into the detail in a way that we can't do in a community meeting here tonight, then you go review the report online. And then you asked a question about a program actually we're already doing. We call it, it comes in our umbrella of One DeKalb Lives. We have an Officer Next Door program. And through a combination of private monies from local banks and through federal money through the housing, housing and urban development, we are, one of our key programs is that we're purchasing homes in, or we're, we're not purchasing, but we're taking homes in quality neighborhoods that have been foreclosed, and we're putting them back on the market, and they're eligible to police officers, firefighters, and other first responders, and teachers, community heroes, who then are eligible for a 50% discount on those homes. And we're advertising up to 40 homes online. Once again, you can see that on the county's website per week. And you don't, you're, what? We're not buying them. Yeah. You know, a lot of this, well, a lot, a lot of, because we don't have the monies to just do it the way you've just described, most of these programs are being subsidized with federal funds. And so they have some very strict guidelines and regulations. Is Chris Morris here tonight? I don't know if Chris, okay, okay. So would you see that gentleman? He can give you some more detail on how some of those programs work and provide you with information. Who's next? Erica? Okay.
My name is Lori.
Sunny, right?
La Liberty Care.
Yeah, Sunny's been very patient up here, too. I think she's being overlooked because she's, she sat up front.
I'll be fast. I live in Tucker. I'm conscientious and recycle. I sort. I pay to put it out on a curb to reduce the landfill volume. Can we have one trash collect in a week? Ask people to pay more for trash collection and pay less for recycling and reduce the load on the landfill.
Yeah, we're moving really in that direction. And various different town halls, you hear, I can't reach your lips, I don't know what you're saying.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay. At various different town hall meetings, we get a lot of different feedbacks. So what we've decided to do this year is to increase our education on recycling, to do more marketing about recycling. You know, listen, it may not be everything you want, but I think I'm getting to where you want to be, because I'm reading your body language, so just get, hear me, hear me out. Hear, hear me.
People have to pay to remove their trash, and it's free to recycle. That will encourage the movement.
Okay, hear me out, and I can tell you, I hear what you're saying. The direction we're moving in, hopefully, only about 20% of the county recycles right now. So the direction we're moving in is to get that number up, something closer to 100%. I believe we're taking away the recycling fee, is it?
The board has no control.
Okay, we have it before the board. See, this is part of the problem, and this is why I want you all to be engaged politically. It's before the Board of Commissioners right now. I want Ted Reinhardt to tell you that. And we're waiting for them to act on it. Okay? So you, sometimes you all have been asking me over the course of the night, what can you do? We've got a proposal to take the fee off of recyc, come explain exactly what we're doing, Ted, because this is another example of needing board action, and that's something I can't do. You can't.
Yeah. The Solid Waste Enterprise Fund pays for itself, is dealing with a lot of issues right now. Complicated issues with landfill and construction and, and cost and diesel fuel, and recycling's high on the agenda. And the Board of Commissioners last year and CEO said, "We want to market more recycling. We want to get people more involved. We want to consider waiving that initial fee to encourage more people to do it." And we've had a lot of dialogue with them, and what they've said is they want more specifics on how the marketing would be done before they finalize when and how the fee might come off. So we're still having dialogue with it, but there's so many different things going on that I think that one's moving. It's not moving as fast as other things, just because I think you've heard that the animal services and other things are high priority. So it's moving, but it's not as fast.
I disagree with Ted on that. Commissioner Kathy Gannon has been at the forefront of that effort, trying to push it through to get us to do more recycling and then lessen the impact on the landfill. And I believe it's just sitting around for political reasons. And so you're gonna need to lobby the Board of Commissioners and ask them to move, and I think we can get closer to the direction that you want to go in. That's what I believe. Okay? I told you I talked straight to you. Okay? All right. Sunny, you get the next question.
Thanks. It's so funny, because you know that when you were first elected and everything, I've been at these meetings, and I've been talking about recycling, so I was glad that you brought this up. I've got a neighbor across the street. Honestly, I've taken photographs, and at least once a week, if not twice a week, there are seven to 10 to 12 containers of trash, at least once a week, if not. I have gone over, I have asked them to recycle. I've gone up and down my street. I've gotten pamphlets about the recycling to get people to recycle, you know, one person trying to do something. And I had asked you before, why couldn't we have, get rid of one of the trash pickups so people might be, you know, because we all, we're human. We respond to incentives. So, and I, somebody once told me that, hey, I've got so many kids, I can't afford not to have two pickups of trash a day, a week. And I'm going, duh, 70% of your trash can be recycled. That's not the right answer. So I'm, I'm with, and I was thinking, I'm so glad you brought it up, because I was thinking that nobody cared about recycling, recycling anymore. So again, it's attitude, and, which goes to my other, I want to know what's been done. You've already said, but that goes to the incentive of, you're talking about all of the transit. Okay? People have not done transit. People need, why do all this stuff for transit if nobody's going to take public transport? And so the incentive is $4 and $5 a gallon, right? Gas? That would be the incentive. So everybody's, so everybody's going, oh, we want $2, you know, a gallon, and then we're spending all the money on transit. But the incentive is higher price, so we need incentives. And has, my question is, has anybody taken a survey, you know, to see whether there's a point in putting all this money into transit if nobody's going to use it once we make it? And then one other thing, the GM plant, that whole thing there, talking about her thing about bringing in a whole new people. If we have a big sparkling area that is, was the former GM plant, I think that'll bring more excitement to DeKalb County.
All right. Thank you, Sunny. And let me tell you, I'm gonna get in trouble from my staff when I leave, because they tell me never give up my mic, and you proved them right. Okay? All right. GM plant, real quick, is economic development. Obviously, you're taking an area that is now economically blighted, and it's a brown field. You're cleaning it up, turning it into a green field, and ultimately into a sustainable transit oriented community. That creates jobs, that's good for the appearance of the community, it's a positive for the whole region. It just happens to be located in DeKalb County in so many ways, so that's a good thing. I agree with what you said about recycling. There was something else, oh, I'm not gonna take responsibility for raising gas as a, as a means of incentivizing people to take transit, but obviously, there's some good, I mean, world-class cities, metropolitan communities around the globe have well-functioning transit systems. And don't think we can do it alone. There's no, there's no transit system, viable transit system in the United States of America that operates without federal funding. So we're gonna have to have federal funding to supplement it, but we're gonna have to make a down payment. And that...
We're spread out. We're not like a city where people block the block and pick up the trash.
Well, we're not New York City, that's sure. But I mean, but they're spread out, too, in a different kind of a way. But I hear what you're saying.
People are doing, people are doing, not enough people are taking transit. What's going, what's going to make them take transit just because we have cheaper buses?
Oh, well, I think it's gonna be about more than buses, but also, you know, I think people don't want to sit in, in traffic all day long. I think that's part of it. Okay, who's next? I can take maybe three more questions.
Mr. Ellis, you've talked about the problems with traffic in DeKalb County and...
In metro Atlanta.
The loss of jobs, yeah. It concerns me that DeKalb is letting Walmart come into Suburban Plaza when that's one of the busiest intersections. I've been told in DeKalb County, we live in the neighborhood next to it, and we keep, we keep getting told that there's nothing that can be done to fix that intersection because the state and the county, I believe, are both control the traffic there. And we're all very concerned about bringing Walmart in there and the amount of traffic it's gonna put on an already burdened area. I know we want jobs, but there seems to be a lot of evidence out there that Walmart results in a loss of jobs when it comes in.
Yeah, I didn't pick Walmart, and understand, I don't own Suburban Plaza, so it gets sort of like the conversation about Northlake Mall. Suburban Plaza has been, and I know that area very well. It's an underutilized shopping center at this point. It's not really generating the kind of economic activity that I think anybody would like to see. And I understand very well concerns about Walmart because as a county commissioner, I had to fight the development of a Walmart at a location in, in my district that I very strongly opposed, but was put there nonetheless, and it's still functioning and operating now. Sea League owns that, that mall. And Sea League has, apparently, I mean, I think the community conversation that's going on is very good. I am, I have had some meetings with, with the Sea League group. I'm having some continuing conversations with them about working with the community in a collaborative way. But at the end of the day, it's privately owned property, and as long as they meet the zoning and development regulations, it's not county-owned property. You know, I can't tell them, don't, don't allow Walmart to move into, they're in the business of, you know, making money at a site that's not making the kind of money that they wanted to make right now. But they also should want to be, and I believe they do want to be, a good community partner. So I think the community activism I see going on right now is a very healthy thing, and I've had some conversations with them, and I'm gonna continue to have some conversations, but I can't force no. Just like I'm trying to get the GM site redeveloped, and I'm having conversations with GM on an ongoing basis about being reasonable and finding a quality developer to come in and redevelop that site. So if I owned the, the Suburban Plaza site, I'd probably do that differently. If I owned the GM site, I would certainly have some activity going on right there right now. But these people are in the business of making money, and some of their decisions are driven by that motive. Yes? Yes, ma'am? This is number three. This may be, I'll take one more question after this.
Okay. I do take martyr every day to Midtown, Doraville Station. I would love to walk down the street, because I live on Old North Cross Road, to catch the bus instead of driving to Doraville. But I live on a very busy street. People drive very fast, and there are no sidewalks. And I never see anyone get a traffic ticket for driving 65 miles.
You live in the city of Doraville?
I live in Tucker, right down from the library. I decided to walk to the library one Saturday, and three times I had to go way into somebody's yard to keep from getting hit by a car. And I live two blocks from the library. Where's DeKalb Police when you leave?
Well, the police chief is here tonight, and, so we'll start, we'll start with the, with our top cop, and, and he's gonna talk to you tonight and, and help you address that issue. Okay? Chief O'Brien. All right. Who gets the last question? Erica?
Well, mine's not a question, but I just wanted to thank you personally for having all these town hall meetings. I know you inherited a lot of junk, and you can't fix it overnight. So I just want to thank you so much for having the town hall meetings. I know you hear a lot of negativity, so I just want to be the positive voice saying thank you. I wish we had more people out for you, but at least we have some. And I sent an invite on Tucker Town Talk, a Facebook page, a group I started. So, and my charge to everybody here in the room is, what are we doing to get involved in our area, in our neighborhoods, in our community? If it's changed, what are we doing to take it back and make it better? And if it's, if it was great and then it got worse, what are we doing to make it better and make it great again? I know some of us are younger, some of us are middle-aged, some of us are older, and I can respect the elders in the room from being active in their younger years and paying their dues, but what are we doing to like pass the baton on to the younger people moving in the neighborhood to instill in them to get involved? But also, what are we doing as also more mature, experienced adults in our neighborhood to also stay involved? That's my charge.
All right, thank you. What is your name?
My name's Anita Stoltzus.
Stoltz?
Yeah. I knew I shouldn't have said my last name. It means proud foot. It's German.
All right, thanks, Anita. How about that? I, I, I want to thank you for that nice comment. It's a good way to close. I want to thank you for what you're doing to give back and your encouragement to everybody here. I want to thank you all for coming out tonight. I want to continue to encourage you, as I've been doing all night, to be politically active, to register to vote, and get your neighbors registered to vote, to watch the issues in the upcoming election. Remember, November's not the only election, but right in the middle of the summer, we've got these important local elections and important regional transportation referendum. And somebody said I was like a sitting duck. I think you said that. But yeah, I want you to know, I love my job. I love what I do. I really enjoy having the opportunity to represent the citizens of DeKalb County. I give my very best to it each and every day, and to these men and women who are seated up front here, who also work with me in county government. I can guarantee you that they give their best to you each and every day as well. So thank you all. We'll continue to make our community and our counties better by working together. Have a good night, everyone.